The purpose of the public hearing meeting tonight is to receive public input concerning the Board of Commissioners' consideration and exercising its authority over commissions, boards, agencies, et cetera, in accordance with Statute 153A-77. Specifically, tonight, we're going over Health, Community Board, and Social Services, and/or creation of a consolidated human services board/agency, or the Board of Commissioners exercising their authority to assume all power responsibilities and duties of the consolidated human services board, as well as the County Board of Social Services, the County Board of Health. Tonight, we've probably got a bunch of people signed up, so we're gonna be a little bit more strict on the three-minute rule for our public meeting. If you find that you've reached your three-minute max, feel free to sign up for the next meetings' public comment section, and we can hear the rest of your comments there. So, with no objections from the Board, we'll go ahead and start with Mr. Dewis.
Yes, good evening. Commissioner, Mr. Adams, thanks for allowing me to speak tonight. I want to speak on the consolidation. My name's Jerry Dewis, and just like the majority of you, I'm also a Republican. Previous commissioners appointed me to serve on the Board of Health, where I've been serving twenty years representing the engineering profession. When Commissioner Rogers, Mal, and Eldridge consolidated the boards in 2018, I was appointed to that consolidated board as well. I soon resigned when I saw how ineffective it was going to be. These two conflicted, different boards specialize in unique needs of their respective clients. When Tovin made his way to Jackson County, partners, professionals, and non-politicians, doctors, nurses were open to seeing the health department, both of our residents dying. Consolidated and dissolved, who worked in county for the food department were co-located in one building. But we spent millions of dollars remodeling this building, two buildings of opposite size of town, for these two departments. Calls associated with consolidating these departments were far out of line in saving the hope of real lives. And lastly, my fellow faculty and commissioners, look at them. The sole commission that voted for consolidation in 2018 is set by their whip. The three that voted for it are gone. History shows consolidation is an excellent way for y'all to lose your seat that you're sitting in tonight. I firmly recommend that you let these two boards continue to function independently and effectively, and you focus on ones that discount in this county that's actually broken. Politics should never interfere with what people say. That's all I got. Thank you.
Next up tonight, we have Christine Taber. Hope I got you, did I pronounce your name correctly?
Christy Taber.
Okay.
I've been a resident of Jackson County since 2008. I have never, in the whole time I've been here, heard a single neighbor complain about the health department, so why are we here? Dr. Smith, please stand up. We are here today because Commissioner Smith would like to insert himself into the daily operations of the Health Department and the Social Services Department. Commissioner Smith is an IT guy. His LinkedIn page, some of the things that he specializes in is puppet configuration. That is what he would like to say. He would like these departments, and by extension, the residents of Jackson County, to become his puppets. What was his reasoning? In January, days after taking office, he stated he thought it would give more oversight if he and his fellow politicians would be put in charge of these departments. This despite County Manager Don Adams explicitly telling him there would be no financial benefit to taxpayers. During the February 14th workstation, County Manager Don Adams noted that the board could not abolish these departments, but you could reorganize them. During that same meeting, no one could identify any single gain in efficiency or effectiveness, no matter, Commissioner Smith reiterated, he felt there needed to be more accountability. Commissioner Smith, I'm here to hold you accountable today. Months went by, and not one single hour was spent on how this reorganization would affect the residents of Jackson County. Instead, they spent all their time looking at what the law allows them to do. Not what is best for the people of Jackson County, but what the law allows them to do. Then in August, Commissioner Smith went all in. He explicitly advocated so-called Option Three. In other words, the Health Department and the Social Services Department would be subject to the whims of our county commissioners. This is a power grab, plain and simple. This reorganization should be tabled permanently. Option Four, do nothing.
Thank you. Next up, we have Tom Downing.
I'm Tom Downing. I live here in Jackson County. I've been following this consolidation question pretty closely, and in my mind, it's either brilliant political strategy, or it's something else. It really is brilliant, I mean, really, political strategy. To go ahead and to say it's gonna cost less, and we're gonna be able to add more staff, that's brilliant, it really is. Hats off to you guys, who said that. The other thing is, it's like springing on us. Like, a bunch of fifteen-minute public comment period for this. You're meeting special turn at six. I don't know how many people read that and saw that in your minutes and thought, what the heck's going on? Fifteen minutes for public comment for a public hearing that's required by statute? That's brilliant political theater, really is. No problem, ladies and gentlemen, we're not talking about politics, we're talking about real-life people that get served by these two departments. These two departments are very likely thirty percent of our county budget, and you're talking about one little public hearing, and one little work session, and you put a bunch of stuff up, and we're gonna save a bunch of money, and absolutely no real-life, actual facts, magical thinking going on. What are we gonna do? I'll tell you what, it's not brilliant political strategy, you're perpetrating a stain on this county. It really is, it's a stain on you, and on this county, and on the people that use these departments. People that use the departments have no choice. There's not another health department, there's not another DSS. It's monopolizing the government, and you're called as members, you're called as people that took an oath to disdain and to our Constitution to do what's right, and this is not right, it's a stain. And the only question to you is, who's gonna be the stain remover?
Next up, we have Carl Nicholas.
Gentlemen, my name is Carl Nicholas, I've lived at Silver for over fifty years now. My departed wife has served for ten years on this very commission. As Silver Herald has reported, Commissioner Tom Sribling has joined Commissioners Mark Jones and Todd Bryson in opposing consolidation of the Health and Social Services Departments. This is an excellent, this is excellent news for everybody, I think. Doesn't that mean, three votes against two? The status quo will remain, and perhaps we've learned a lesson? If it ain't broke, don't fix it. I think the most important thing that guided these three commissioners to come to the same conclusion was this. The consolidation proposal contained a prospect of adding a new position to the mix, namely, a consolidated human services director, who would oversee Health and Social Service Departments. This person would then hire a person with healthcare credentials to fill the currently vacant position of Health Director. Well, the executive, this executive commission clearly expands the size of the consolidated department, but it does not require any particular familiarity with either Health or Social Services. But it will surely command a salary higher than that of the two subordinate directors. Now, this certainly has all the trappings of a political club, one that the three defected commissioners have clearly identified. Commissioner Bryson said it all when he told the Silver Herald, Republicans are gonna control this board for four years. But say four years now, down the road, the Democrats take over. If we politicize the boards, that's going to be an ongoing thing from now on. I don't think it's in the best interests of the county at all for us to be involved. Thank you.
Next up, we have Ms. Bogartis.
I just have a few questions, because I keep thinking, I'm not real clear on this. I'd like to know what the benefit of the consolidation is for the citizens of Jackson County that live here. You know, the main people who use this are the twenty-five to twenty-six percent of people who live in poverty here. Are they gonna benefit from this consolidation? I mean, I really would like to know that we're supposed to be serving these people. At least, you know, commissioners are supposed to be serving the people in Jackson County. Does consolidation actually improve the services of the department? If that's true, then I'm for it, because I really think there's many things that should be helped here, especially our issues with foster parents and stuff in Social Services. If we can fix that by a consolidated board, that would be great, that'd be wonderful. And also, I'd like to know which ones of the commissioners here have expertise in either public health or social service. I know, I'm not a social service person, I know more about health than I do social service, but I'm not a county commissioner. So which one of you is an expert in social services or public health? I mean, because that would be helpful if they're gonna take over that particular program. And the other thing to think about is what specific problems that are right now in those departments can be solved by this consolidation. I'm not clear as to what that's gonna be, but obviously, that would be the benefit from the consolidation, would be that we would have specific problems that would be resolved. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Bergen Mackey.
Bergen. My name is Bergen Mackey, and I have lived in western North Carolina my entire life. I've had the distinct honor of living in Jackson County for the past seven years. As somebody who's studied public health at Western, a recent graduate, I feel like I have an insight into the world of how public health works. And I have to say, even with just four years of experience, I still feel like I have such a short amount of insight into the inner workings, and the complexities, and the nuances that it takes to be a public health servant. So, Commissioner Bryson, I have to say, I echo your sentiments of not wanting Republicans or Democrats to be involved in our public health service. I, as a registered Democrat, I don't want Democrats in charge of my health services. I don't want politicians in charge of these services. I think it's best to keep these services at the behest of people that have spent their lives, that have spent their entire careers focusing on the intricacies and the nuances of health departments, of public health, and of social services. I don't see a benefit to consolidation, and until those benefits are made plain to our community, I strongly urge this body to vote against consolidation. Thank you.
I'm sorry, is Paul McCann? I'm sorry, I couldn't read the handwriting. Is there a David or a Paul?
David McGuire, is that it?
David McGuire, yes, sir. Sorry.
Apologize for my handwriting.
My wife would read this.
Okay. My name's David McGuire. I've been a dentist here in Jackson County for forty-one years, and I've been on the board for the Health Department almost as long. My father was a dentist here in Jackson County, and he was on the Board of Health for almost that long. I'm pretty proud of the Department of Health. They've really done a wonderful job in ways that you guys may not have any idea about. For historically, they have provided better, more services than all the counties in the state of North Carolina, except for two, Orange County and Necklenburg County. For Jackson County to provide more services than all the other ninety-seven, that's amazing rhetoric. I'm very proud of our Health Department. As people have said before, it ain't broke, please don't fix it. I was part of the board when the hearings were, the last time we did this, in 2017. We had a hearing, there was, I think, somewhere around twenty people that spoke. One person spoke for consolidation, all the rest spoke against it, and immediately, as soon as the hearing was finished, they immediately voted to go against the majority. Then, in 2018, there was election, and the voters spoke. I would encourage you to please listen this time, please listen this time. It looks like a clear-cut choice to me. Again, it's not broke, but think of the extra work that's gonna be required of the people in the Department of Public Health and DSS. They're gonna have to put a tremendous number of energy and hours into the changing of the guard here. That's gonna take away from the services that are offered. They can't possibly do all the hard work they're doing now and do all this legwork to get this changed over. Don't you think about the extra work you individually are gonna have doing this? It's gonna take up a ton of your time and your energy. Don't do this to yourselves. All that's gonna decrease the kind of services that are gonna be offered. This will turn it into a political football, and the evidence is on the table from the last time we did this. This is not only for you people, this is, I mean, let's say each of you went to all the trouble to get completely qualified to do all this, to be, make the good decisions that are gonna have to be required out of both of these departments. But what you're voting on is not only just you, you're talking about every county commissioner this going forward is gonna go through that effort to become an expert in all these things. Do you think they're all gonna do it? I'd be amazed if that's the case. They can't possibly do anything but increase the costs to the taxpayer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. McGuire. Next, we have Kyle Clayton.
Thank you. My name's Colin Clayton, I'm a reg, a new board member of the Health Department, only been there for a short time. But what I've said, this has already been attempted and found, so why attempt this again? So my argument is really, is this gonna provide better benefits for the employees? No. Better pay for the employees? No. Better training, better qualifications? No. From the county resident's standpoint, are we gonna be able to provide more benefits, more services? No, we're already doing that. So right now, what's already been said, if it's not broke, don't fix it. So I urge you, please, not to consider this. Thank you.
I'm sorry, is that correct?
Close enough. Hi, again, my name is Stephen Anfinson, although I was recently appointed to the Jackson County Board, Department of Social Services. I speak today as a citizen, since I have been sworn in, which is gonna happen next week. I'd like to point out, I'm professionally trained as a social worker with an MSW, Alison MBA. My comments are based on my training and a career of forty-plus years in the human services field, with the majority of being in management positions. And thinking about this proposal to consolidate, I'm reminded of the old adage, her map from Ready, Aim, Fire. This originated back in the Revolutionary War times, when they were thinking about training, we volunteered as a militia to work with their single-shot muskets and rifles, pistols, rather, and they knew that lead cost a bunch, gunpowder was scarce, and so every shot counted. And so the training says, Ready, Aim, Fire. This map has often been applied to management decisions. An article in Forbes Act in 2015 says that we think we're wrong, usually it's getting to three steps out, or failing to do one of them at all. Based on the material that I've reviewed and the discussion in newspapers particularly, it seems to me what the Board of Commissioners has done is to reverse the order, and they're saying, Fire, then Aim, and then get ready. So it's kind of out of whack. Now, it urges the Commissioners, if they really, really want to do this, they go out of this cause and take action on some of these kinds of activities, such as reviewing why the failed effort back in 2018 fell apart. I can either really understand that, because that was a lot of time and energy, and pointed out that just kind of went down for naught. I think you ought to look at and review the current activities of shared cooperative services between the two agencies. I think there's probably a lot going on that you may not be aware of, and didn't require any consolidation to accomplish. Third is that if you have not consulted with the existing boards and the executive directors, although one is vacant now, but a top person there currently, you probably ought to talk to them about it. What are the pros and cons of consolidating or not? Another thing you can do is look at actions, additional actions that might be taken without consolidation, that'll save all those headaches. Fifthly, you probably ought to get some kind of input from county employees of these two agencies. What do they think about it? What are their complaints? What do they like about what they're doing, et cetera? Sixth, there should be a curve identifier of what the heck the problem is you're trying to solve, if you can pull this effort. And finally, before you act, you need to look at developing some specific and realistic plan of action, with timelines, and a complete cost-benefit analysis that would be adopted as part of the decision of the seats. So don't fire before you are prepared or ready. Thank you.
A part of me wants to get up here and say, what they said. I digress, I digress. My name is Dana Tucker, I'm the Chair of the Department of Social Services Board of Directors, and so, or Board. I want to thank you for the opportunity to be able to talk for a few minutes. I want to thank you for the opportunity to be able to talk for a few minutes. And as someone who has worked with some of the less fortunate in our county for, I don't know, I think it's close to thirty-one years now, something to that effect, I want you to hear me say that change is often seen as a real positive action, doing something different, especially when you have politics or you have public opinion that is involved with that. In fact, businesses, which you guys know much more about, you have forgotten more than I will ever know, businesses in order to remain competitive must be willing to change or at least adjust to stay ahead of the competition. And that's part of business. However, I have found in the area of a public service agency that the competition is most times more about trying to find available resources or placement or mental health services and assistance that's necessary, services for the least of these. For those people who have no voice, either they're not old enough to vote, or they're elderly who are dependent upon others to be able to help obtain basic care and protection from exploitation. There are single parents who would not be able to have representation in child support board if they had to afford the attorney. They would be hard-pressed to navigate that system based on law and procedures only. May I say that the issue of consolidation of the Health Department and the Department of Social Services seems to be focused on the ability or the right to have you, as the Commissioners, assume responsibility of both Boards of Directors by combining them into one. And I say to you that Jackson County leaders, all of us, all of us who are Jackson County leaders, the people who are standing behind me who are, we have a fiduciary and a heavy responsibility, a fiduciary duty and a heavy responsibility to the residents of our community to be transparent in our leadership. Changing the leadership structure of these two vital public service agencies without divulging the full scope of the proposed plans to dissolve the two sitting boards gives rise to questions of motives and political agendas. Jackson County residents are fully aware that DSS and the Health Department serve the most vulnerable populations in our county. State and federal audiences, these agencies do not indicate deficiencies requiring a gutting or restructuring of the current boards. I have a copy of the audits that DSS does, and it's extensive, that they have to go through every year. I'm sure some of you guys have seen that. The planned changes that we're talking about may be beneficial, but it also may be a train wreck. And I don't know which one. If there's no proposed restructuring plan, how are we supposed to know? How are you supposed to know? Social working, the social worker in me, I'm up?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. I have this to say. Is this a solution to a problem that doesn't exist? Thank you.
You're gonna have to give me a little extra time, man.
You're fine.
Sometimes I hear the word "blunder."
Thanks for the opportunity to come speak to y'all, and I have great respect for you. You got a tough job. I did it for a while. I don't know how good a job I did. I'm a resident. They sent me to the house. But it's a tough job, and it takes a lot of time, and so I appreciate what you're doing. We got started with this situation. There's two things that stand out in my mind. One of them, we had a workshop, and there's a fellow at the workshop introduced this, said, "There's a lot of people who see us doing it." And the Lord in heaven knows I'm telling the truth. I'm at a lot around talking to people, and I haven't, had never had anyone come up to me and said, "When are we gonna consolidate them two departments?" For one thing, they didn't know if they were gonna consolidate. And I think some of them thought it was consolidated, they didn't know, and really, they didn't care because they're trying to get your kid ready to go to school next day and do his homework and things of that nature. I am so, and you should be, I am so proud of the people up here and spoke. Just to think that we have people in this county that can get up and articulate themselves the way these folks are. I mean, that's good. I mean, that is really good. And when you look at these two boards, it just kind of helps that we can get people of that caliber to do that job. And I remember so vividly when we had the pandemic, and I don't know who got vaccinated or whatever, but you go out there to the department lady, and that was all, you know, they had everything set up, bringing through, and there's working the Sheriff's Department and the military and the nightstick guard, Western Carolina University's nurses, and all these people. And you could, as a Commissioner, which I didn't have crap to mouth about some of the stuff they were doing, but it was so great. You just stand there and watch this thing that was going on and how organized it was. And it wasn't just one day thing. I mean, it went on and on, still going on. It made me really proud of what we have. And I don't, I don't see any reason to do what some of you may think you should do. And we all have decisions to make. Boy, I wish I could change some of the decisions I made down through the years, and then I'm pretty glad of some of them. But I hope that you look at it real, I'm sure you're gonna look at this real strongly, and I hope you really listen to these people that spoke, because I mean, I may be correct. I just think they're speaking from a heart like y'all.
I know we had some people come in late. Did anyone else want to speak at public comment?
I'm sorry I was late. I was under the impression it started at six.
You're fine. What's your?
My name is Alice Marie Pendergast. I've been a resident of Jackson County for forty-six years this month and retired from the Jackson County School System. I have a letter that I'd like to rewrite to the Commissioners by my friend, Gail Woody, who is unable to be here tonight because she's serving on the North Carolina Senior Tar Heel Legislature representing Jackson County, if I might.
If we could, if you'll pull that mic down, this helps people hear out there and also...
Good, okay. Is that better? Okay, thank you. First, and this is from Gail. She says, "First, I want to thank you for your service to Jackson County. You carry the important responsibility of spending our tax revenue carefully and wisely in ways that serve all of us citizens. I would like to offer input for you to consider while deciding on the consolidation of the Public Health Board and the Department of Social Services Board. Number one, it will cost Jackson County more to consolidate. The new director will command a salary of some one hundred thousand dollars and then include benefits on top of that. County Manager Don Adams does a fine job supervising the directors of each of the departments. That is what he's already paid to do. Why add another layer of administration that is not needed? Jackson County does not need more administration. Two, while serving as a Jackson County Commissioner, I had the privilege of representing the seven western counties on the Board of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. This position allowed me to meet and get to know Commissioners from across the state. I was able to discuss the consolidation issue with several Commissioners from other counties, and only counties with very large populations found consolidation beneficial. Rural counties who consolidated did not find it saved taxpayer dollars but increased cost. One county separated their boards after consolidation for this very reason. This insight and other factors made the Jackson County Board of Commissioners decide not to consolidate the boards. Number three, we need citizens qualified and knowledgeable in various disciplines to serve on our Boards of Health and DSS Board. Citizens on our Board of Health, like Engineer Jerry DeLeese, Dentist David, Dr. David McGuire, and Pharmacy's Dr. Callan and others, have long served Jackson County in their professions. I'm sure that Commissioner Todd Bryson would not want me, a retired health educator and art teacher, to tell him how best to embalm a body. Commissioner Bryson has had training and experience in the field of embalming. I have not. Each of our Board of Health members serves as an expert in their field of practice. Those are the people I want making decisions on the Board of Health, not county Commissioners who, however well-intentioned, do not have the training or experience in the health fields. The same reasoning applies to the DSS Board. Each of those boards currently have dedicated citizens who volunteer their time to serve. And then, number four, by North Carolina statutes, the Public Health Board will still require an advisory board representing the various health fields. If the Board of Commissioners decides to become the Board of Health, that creates another layer of government. Many citizens feel we need less government, not more. Thank you for considering this input while making your decision. I'm praying that you will have wisdom as you decide what is best for the citizens of Jackson County. First Timothy two, one through four. Sincerely, Gail Woody." Thank you.
Hi, I'm Terry Cole Smith, and originally wasn't gonna speak. I don't have anything written. But what I spent most of my day doing today was researching what it means to consolidate these two entities. And I saw the newspaper article, both by the Silver Herald and by the Smoky Mountain News, and in that it describes really well what the four different options are, but there was zero reason given as to what benefit would be for consolidation, as I've heard other people say. And a fifteen-minute public hearing on short notice is not, this is not a lot of people. It feels like a lot of people, but this is not a lot of people for our county of forty thousand, right? So I wanted to know why. Maybe this is a good idea, maybe this isn't a good idea, no idea. So I started reading to figure out more, and I can't find anything from anybody on the Commissioners that indicates why this would be a good idea. No specifics, no nothing, right? So again, putting the cart before the horse, if you're gonna vote, yeah, we're gonna do this thing, and now here are the reasons why we want to do this or why this would be a good idea, seems foolhardy. But secondly, as I was just researching this, I'm a pretty good researcher, like I could do this, I recognized, wow, this is gonna take a long time. This is gonna be really complicated. It's gonna take a long time. It's gonna take a lot of money. And, I mean, I just have printed out a couple of things, ones I didn't print out, they're like three pages long on why. And so I was looking at the various reasons and how it would happen, and, you know, if it's the Board of Commissioners that is controlling everything, now all of a sudden, I assume you guys are working pretty hard and doing a lot of time in what we're doing already, I don't think that that couldn't help double. I mean, honestly, the amount of work and the amount of knowledge you guys are gonna have to figure out on what we're gonna do and how this is gonna separate out, and do you have a CHSA, and there's twenty-five people that are gonna do that? Is it gonna be up to, you know, Don Adams? Is it gonna go that route to appoint the various people? Now, all this is his job. I don't understand why that would be a benefit. So what I really, really, really want to hear, because otherwise it just sounds like a bad idea with a lot more government, and is why? Like, I just, I don't know why. And, yeah, you're gonna put another person up on the top of there. Maybe you're gonna have directors for each of those, it's not clear in any of the information that I've read. Do you still have a director for DSS? Do you still have a director for Public Health? You've got this overarching group that has to be, you know, four commissioners, four people from the county. Anyway, so, is that me? No? That's not my time. And I can't find the reasons why this would be an appropriate thing, especially since everybody that's a Commissioner only serves, you know, you serve these four years, two years, yeah, four years, but it's two-two, right? How are we gonna maintain the knowledge on this board to oversee this kind of change? I do think there are a lot of problems. I'm not like somebody who was like, "If it's not broke, don't fix it." There's a lot broken, but I don't think this is gonna fix anything, so, thank you.
Let's get Natalie in here.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm gonna make this really short and sweet. I have a suggestion. Instead of focusing or talking about consolidation, maybe you guys could take some time to look into what it would take to get a mental health and substance abuse facility in this county, as well as the homeless, a homeless shelter that addresses homelessness in this community as well. I hope you guys can look into that soon instead of consolidating.
Gentlemen, I'm Charles, local business owner, been here for forty-one years, and I'm a member of the Department of Social Services Board now. I was a member of the Department of Social Services Board before, when I was a member of the Consolidated Board for a time that existed. And basically, I'm gonna be really quick about this, but what I want to express, I oppose the consolidation of these boards, because at this point, I have not seen anything in print by one or in the other way that shows how this is in any way gonna benefit these agencies or the people in our communities that they are here to serve. I have great admiration for both the Public Health Department does for our citizens, and also the same is true for the Department of Social Services. And so I just wanted to express my opinion at this time.
Is there anyone else?
I've got a linlent to my... Can I take a linlent?
Yes, sir, real quick.
You know, we have a new animal shelter, and it's awesome. We can't find enough people to work to even run it. And they're taking people, works in the Health Department now, they're having to put their works a few days a week in that animal shelter. And I think if we got any money, if we can spend on something, let's just spend it on the county, give them people a raise and turn it out. And there are... Oh, no, there's plenty of places we can spend money that probably won't be no real. Thank you, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. All right. Mr. Johnson?
I have just a real quick question, and not putting anybody on the spot. If there is somebody and you might not want to speak, is anybody for consolidation, you can raise your hand in the audience tonight? Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion? Is there a motion to close public hearing?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
You're adjourned. We need to take five minutes.
Regular scheduled meeting to order. Starting off tonight, we have proclamation. This week is, well, Fire Prevention Week is this week. So whereas Jackson County is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living or visiting our area, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas home fires kill more than 2,800 people in the United States in 2021, according to the National Fire Protection Association. And fire departments in the United States responded to 338,000 home fires. And whereas cooking is the leading cause of home fires in the United States, and fire departments responded to more than 166,400 annually between 2016 and 2020. And whereas two of every five home fires starts in the kitchen, with 31% of these fires resulting from unattended cooking. And whereas more than half of reported non-fatal home cooking fire injuries occurred when the victims tried to fight the fire themselves. And whereas children under five face the highest risk of non-fire burns associated with cooking than being burned in a cooking fire. And whereas residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires almost in half. And whereas Jackson County first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection and education. And whereas the 2023 Fire Prevention Week theme, Cooking Safety Starts With You, Pay Attention to Fire Prevention, effectively serves to remind us to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires. Therefore, the Jackson County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim October 8th through 14th, 2023, as Fire Prevention Week throughout the county, and urges all the citizens of the Jackson County to check their kitchens for fire hazards and use safe cooking practices during Fire Prevention Week 2023, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of our fire and emergency services adopted the 3rd day of October of 2023. And tonight, we have Michael Florbus from Jackson County Fire Department.
And I also have Captain Brandon Green with me from Savannah Fire Department and his family.
Great. Y'all come on up. We've got to vote, just one second.
Okay, yes, we do.
Is there a motion to adopt Jackson County's Fire Prevention Week, October 8th and 14th? So moved. And second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
A little punch? Yeah, come on up. Oh, yeah. Mr. Jones is going to stand in front of the hottest, unfortunately.
You're going to be changing the house, ground, and tools?
Yeah, that's it. Okay. Well, I'm sure we'll be.
All right, three, one, two, three. One more, one, two, three.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir. Thank you all.
Would you have a minute for Brandon Green to let you know something? Things are going on this week and next week in school?
Sure.
Well, first of all, thank you all. We appreciate that. We're also going to invite you all out for this next two weeks. Started on, we actually started this week on Monday at Smoky Mountain Elementary. Today, we were at Heritage, and we've got a school plan for every day over these next two weeks, basically. And each school we go in, we're in there all day long. We start, we have a morning presentation. We bring eighth through fifth graders together, and we talk about cooking safety. We also talk about how to get out of your house. You have two ways out. We're actually the only group here in Jackson County and the state that does it like we're doing it. It's been shown to work. When we started this, our percentage of house fires went down. Our kids knowing how to dial 911 has improved. We've actually had instances where the kids were able to call 911, and they knew exactly what to tell the dispatcher. So it's actually working really well. This year, around 2,000 kids is how many we're going to be able to stand in front of and give this information to. This is actually our seventh year of being a nonprofit and going out and doing this. As of Monday, we had 41 people helping at Smoky Mountain Elementary. Three of those were, you know, it's kind of a job to be there. The rest of us were volunteers. We leave our jobs. We take off to do this. My job allows me to come out and spend two weeks doing this and helping the kids, and it's great. I would like to invite each and every one of yous to come out. This Thursday, we're at Holloway Valley. That's a great one to come to. We've got Scotch Creek on Monday, and we've got Victory on Tuesday, Blue Ridge on Wednesday, and then we're at Fairview next Thursday. So if y'all can, we would love to have yous come out and see what this is all about. Thank you three times.
Another question, if you don't mind. I know in both ends of the counties, there's kids that are homeschool.
Yes.
Have a time that parents can bring their kids to, you know, one of the facilities and.
Yeah, so we actually done home, say, homeschool kids were, what day was it?
In the Cashers last week, we did it and worked with a group of Cashers homeschool students. Can you tell them that there's a homeschool group they can reach out to the fire department to work with?
That's exactly right.
This Thursday?
This Thursday, in the Holloway. No worries.
You there all day?
We're there all day.
About 7:30 to around 3.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Moving on to approval of the agenda. Is there any need for adjustments to the agenda? If not, I'll seek a motion for approval.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor? None opposed? Next, we've got our work session, our public hearing for the transit grants, and our regularly scheduled meetings from September 12th and 19th. If everyone's had a chance to look over those, and there's no need for any kind of amendments, I'll seek a motion for approval of the 12th, 19th, and the public hearing on the 19th minutes.
Motion to approve the amendments?
And second? All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Moving on now to administrative reports. Tonight, I don't really have anything to report. Do any of the other commissioners have anything to report tonight?
Just a little quick something. Just wanted to appreciate, and I think Coach Deach said it best, the articulation of information that was shared with us tonight. And, you know, one lady mentioned this wasn't a big turnout. Well, it is a big turnout for a public hearing, particularly since COVID. So thank you all for taking the time and even some of you sticking around. Thank you.
Any additional?
I'd like to say that my wife and I attended the awake dinner. Well, not dinner, but thing at Bear Lake the other night. And boy, what a great turnout that was. Lots of people. I don't know exactly how much money was raised, but there was a lot of stuff that was auctioned off and bought at a good price and all that. So, yeah, good time.
Moving on now to the county manager's report.
No formal report, but I think we do have to sign that.
Public comment? Okay. First up tonight, we have Christina Smith. Ms. Smith?
Coraline.
Okay.
Christina has asked me to read this. She's a little shy. I wouldn't read it if I didn't agree with it, though. "I want to encourage Commissioner Smith to stop calling members of the gay community perverts. You must remember that they are your constituents whether you like it or not. When you took your oath of office to be a commissioner, you vowed to serve the citizens of this county. And the gay community is part of that citizenry, and you are their servant. Gay people have been part of the population since the creation, and they have always been outcasts because of small-minded people in power. I believe that they are part of what Jesus called 'the least of these, my brethren.' But here's the whole quote from Matthew 25. 'Whatsoever you do to the least of these, my brethren, you have done it unto me.'
Thank you. Tom Downing?
Thank you, Commissioners. Again, good evening. Thanks for taking my comments. My comments relate to a little bit, a little bit of, I'm sorry. No, a little bit of obscure thing. And it's, it's called the Uniform Guidance. And if you get a federal grant, any federal money that comes from the state or from anybody else, there's a whole bunch of requirements you have to follow. And one of them is not to discriminate against anybody. So your health department and your DSS department do get federal grants, as do other places elected in your county budget. And so anybody in the community, including an elected official, believes that they're going to discriminate against anyone in any program that has federal money, anyone in the community can call the federal government and report that. And the penalty is debarment, which means we don't get any more money from that federal agency. Pretty severe. And I bet people that don't get their pup program because the money's withdrawn are going to be a little bit peeved. So everyone gets served regardless of anything, right? Everybody has their rights. And if you do combine these two boards, we've talked about earlier, those employees are covered under that. You can't discriminate against them. They have the same protections as the state, human resources protections. The same protections in the federal law will apply. So if someone in the community or an elected official has it in their mind they're going to discriminate, I bet there's a bunch of people who are gonna just raise some, well, problems. But probably not gonna happen, because you've got great leadership of your county manager and your county attorney, if you finally do hire one for real, they will keep you on the straight and narrow, so you don't get sued and you don't get debarred. Thank you.
And then Dana Tucker? Tucker?
I get to talk again?
You, you signed up?
All right. I feel like that I I feel like whatever I say is gonna be repeating. But I can tell you from someone who has worked with the less than for most of my life, or al, almost all of my career, starting at DSS and then going with the school system, that it's really difficult to try to convey the need that is in this county because it doesn't show. We have beautiful buildings. We have good roads. We have two newspapers that do good jobs. We have a university from the North Carolina, um, University of North Carolina system. We have lots of tourists, we have high, we have cashers and all points in between, including Bear Lake. And it is nice up there and it's fun. I agree with you. And that awake fundraiser is a lot of fun. But there's people that will never show up here. There's people that do not believe that politicians know that they exist. I promise you that until I am not able anymore, I will serve those people too. And I really appreciate your consideration and your patience of listening to us. It couldn't have been easy. I think I would've had to go get Botox before I was able to listen. But I appreciate you. I ask you to consider the people that you don't see every day because they're almost invisible. And they're not gonna come here and, and stand up. But I promised myself that I would be a voice for people who have no voice. I will stand for those who cannot stand. I will do everything in I can to work toward making sure that people have what they need to be as successful as they determine to be. That's my life motto. And you're happy to use it if it touches you. But that's how I measure things, and I thank you for the second. And for the additional time.
Moving on now to new business. Uh, first up is human services consolidation. Um, just so that the crowd knows, we're not taking a vote tonight. Gaining more information as we move forward, so.
So, yes, sir. So this is a continuation of the conversation that's been previously held, um, in multiple different meetings with the board. Uh, ultimately, uh, what I'm standing here before the board is, is looking for direction. Uh, you can't, there's nothing to vote on tonight, meaning if the board chose to proceed forward with consolidation, then the statute, I, I have provided just the same information that's been provided before. I may do the wrong thing, actually. And, you know, in the statute itself, it does require, uh, this board did wish to proceed forward to hold a public hearing. The public hearing, the advertisement allowed for all choices to be considered within this statute. That's the way it was advertised. Uh, all we of this board wishes to move forward with any of the choices, and I did also provide beyond the, the statutory language, the, uh, options under what they called at the time new law, but this is actually PowerPoint presentation information that is provided by the school of government. And so the board would choose to move forward with, uh, options one, two, or three, and remember, we did talk about the four as, as do nothing. Um, if the board chose to move forward to one, two, or three, then that would require a, an adoption of a resolution, uh, which is specified in the statute. And so at this point, um, there are several elements in that resolution that would have to be discussed, but I need to respond to your comments on what your next steps would be. Um, so, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll, I'll turn it over to you. Um, if the board wished to proceed forward, then I'd recommend that this conversation continue at work session. Now, if you choose not to move forward, then the conversation does not continue.
I mean, I, I, I feel like we heard a, a, a pretty good idea of, of what we're needing to explain better and then make a decision off of that. Um, really, the goals and objectives are not clear as to what we've decided at this point. Um, I think that we do have good goals and objectives. Maybe we haven't voiced it enough at this point, but moving it to the, uh, to the work session allow us more time to can elaborate on, on the goals and objectives of, of any consolidation if we move forward with that and allow us to get a little bit better feel as to how our constituents are really feeling and moving in that direction. So, um, for me, I feel like we need to get more information on two and three as to how we, how that process looks in, um, I guess law, or I guess in, uh, in that regulation and make that determination. So for me, I feel like we should probably push this to our work session for more general discussion. Try and answer some of these questions and then, uh, see if the board still feels as though we need to move forward or table.
Unfortunately, I, I didn't get to attend the, uh, September work session. Uh, I, I mean, I've got some questions and stuff before we move, if we do move forward. Uh, so is that a good time now to do that, or?
I, I think so. I think we need to go ahead and get this moving forward, and then we can have that general discussion, and then we can come back, uh, again with, with findings, determinations, or, or table.
Move it to the October tenth work session so we can all discuss it again.
Correct.
With everybody present.
Pretty much heard what everybody had to say about it, though.
Yeah.
You know? Didn't have anybody for it.
No, but I mean, I think our next step is just to make that in our work session so that we can.
Heard several people say that they wanted more information.
Right. So it's just, it's just kind of goals and objectives of what policy is actually going to look like as we make a decision, and if we decide not to, we'll make that determination next Tuesday.
Good enough.
Clarify something for me, uh, Mr. Adams. Doing this, uh, are we gonna open up the door to be able to compete with other counties pay-wise, or is it just policy? State policy, county policy? I listened in to some of the, the meeting that I was not able to attend, and, um, can you maybe explain this better, but it's?
Well, yeah, moving them under the county system gives us more flexibility from what I understand versus the state, because the state has ratios that you have to meet.
Right.
So if you move one position salary, it could affect other positions around it. Is that?
So yeah, so we're talking about the State Human Resources Act. Uh, part of that act, uh, does have, for lack of better terms, a required salary plan and required separations between functions, between, uh, grades and functions. And so ultimately, uh, under the current system, the animal rescue center, the animal shelter was brought up. Under that current system, if we were to, to look at trying to raise the end of patrol officer position, you would actually retain react because of the required separations. You would go from animal patrol officer to lead officer to supervisor. And what it would require is for all of those salaries to be adjusted accordingly. So where you get a little bit limited in this conversation under the current functions is that if you tried to target certain positions, then ultimately it does cause a chain reaction to potentially raise salaries that you aren't intended to raise. Now, there's multiple ways to approach that conversation. One is, is if you go away from the, the State Human Resources Act, this is information I provided before. There are federal requirements, okay? So that, that is correct, I believe it was mentioned to you that. There are federal standards, and I can add to the board, and I can bring it back to the, part of the federal standards is to ensure that you have like equal opportunity, nondiscrimination, things of that nature. We do have a current personnel policy that addresses the vast majority of those issues. Part of that is also competitive pay, but we do have a salary plan in place that I believe would meet the federal requirement. Now, the state does have another avenue that I just want to make sure that we discuss, so it doesn't sound as if they were not discussing all options. There is another avenue with the state that you can attempt to do a substantially equivalent. There's certain, you can take the State Human Resources Act, and you can take portion of that. And so instead of just going away from the act completely, you could actually attempt to be substantially equivalent to it, meaning we could attempt to try to change things, but we would have to get that approved by the state. It would be monitored on an annual basis, and the reality is whether or not I could impact any particular person, I don't know. You'd have to go through the process for a substantial equivalent. I know that's a lot longer answer than you asked for that, but.
No, that's great.
Uh, Bryson, but I just want to make sure that all information has been provided and discussed. But on its face, um, you do have, when you go away from the plan, salary plan of the State Human Resources Act, generally speaking, it will give you more flexibility in regards to pay scale.
From what I've heard since our prior discussion about consolidation is, um, people are leaving the Department of Social, Social Services because it's more pay, and they're able to get more pay in other counties. And that's, that's, I mean, to me, that's not okay. I mean, we need to be able to compete with, with other counties and keep our employees as well as bring new employees to our county.
I, I'm not discounting the pay issue, okay, for social. But ultimately, it's a targeted issue. Um, you know, it's, it's really child welfare where you, where this, I, again, I don't want to speak for Chris. We have multiple operations, law and sheriff's office, we still have multiple operations right now that are dealing with pay issues. So I, I want to make sure that's clear to the, to the board. When we start focusing in on social workers, um, a pay issue, I just want to remind the board, we, let's forget about all of this for a second. Let's forget about consolidation, let's forget about all of these conversations. I just want to remind the board, we've got an entire county that are dealing with these issues. And so ultimately, I, I just hope that you keep that in mind, that anytime we start focusing on any particular department, just realize it does bring up potentially other issues, okay? Uh, whether it be sheriff's office employees or other, uh, aging employees, things of that nature. I just, I don't focus on that. Now, going back to social services, yes, there are, there are, there are some significant constraints on social services at this point. Uh, and, and generally, it changes through the years, and the issue dealing with right now is with the child welfare issues. It has put in a significant amount of stress on employees, uh, going back to that twenty-four-seven coverage. Uh, and ultimately, um, you know, this board did react, and, and we are providing supplements for that, but there are more issues above and beyond pay that's causing turnover and causing issues there. Now, I don't want that to be written as written, but I think all social workers and social service people are being paid. And because if you ask any employee, uh, they may give you a different response. But right now, the biggest stress that my conversations that I'm having directed with social services really relates to the child welfare issues. And so, so yes, there, there are some issues. And right now, you cannot, if you try to target social workers for, that are dealing with the, the foster care and things of that nature, then you do have, and it's called segments, but the separation, you do have some issues in regards to whether or not you could target those individual social workers versus another social worker. Um, but it doesn't mean you couldn't explore it, and it does create additional challenges under the current pay scale if you tried to target.
And I also want to go off for something that, uh, Commissioner Jones said, um, you know, about the billboards and also that, um, newspaper reported on. This, this does not come up over, on my end of it, over a billboard. It's just, they jump to, you know, they assume, I guess, and I'm sure I'll be in the newspaper tomorrow, and that's okay. But as a, as a county resident, I serve all, as a commissioner, I serve all people of Jackson County. The Department of, the Health Department should be neutral no matter what's on those billboards, because i- if we, if we go out there and we put a Christian flag or any flag on those billboards, it, it's gonna be, we're, we're gonna have a, a whole room full. There should be no, nothing. There shouldn't even be a billboard up. That's a waste of tax dollars, in my opinion. And again, that may be on the front page of the newspaper tomorrow, but, uh, that's just how I feel, and that's where I stand. And if the newspaper, if they want to have a fact from a commissioner, they need to call us and ask us. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Um, so I guess my, my question is, is there enough of a, a quorum to move this to the work session so that we can explore options two and three, or option four, which is do nothing?
I would like to discuss it more in the work session.
So there's a motion to move it forward. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Moving on to our two thousand and twenty-four holiday schedule.
That's pretty simplistic. Um, uh, just bringing before you the upcoming, uh, calendar year, two thousand and twenty-four holiday schedule. This is something that, uh, we normally, uh, just bring for the board for approval.
Is there a motion to approve the? And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
None opposed? Now on to, uh, legislation for a special event, uh, greening up the mountains five K race.
Yes, sir. This is just an annual, uh, uh, item that comes before the board. Uh, it's temporary traffic regulation for the special five K run county event for greening up the mountains.
Is this a, um, is there a motion, is there any discussion from the board about this? I see no problems with it.
We're not gonna block off in the streets just, just temporarily.
This is where they're doing traffic control.
Right, so it's just traffic control.
Yeah.
Is there a, um?
Motion to approve?
Yeah. Second?
Yeah.
Madam clerk?
Commissioner Stripling?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Lutzen?
Yes.
Moving on now to appointments. Um, first up, we have Southwest, uh, commit, or Southwest. Um, first up, we have Southwest, uh, commit, or Southwest Community College appointment. Um, we have three candidates that have been vetted. Uh, is there a motion to, uh, approve one of those?
I'm making a motion to approve, Captain.
Second?
Make a motion for C Y Wang.
Any additional? Not having a motion for C Y Wang, we'll take a vote on, uh, Mr. Dabman. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Stripling?
Yes.
Chairman Lutzen?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to our final board pointee. Uh, for the Transit Advisory Board, we have, uh, Mr. German Vivas, who is a current transit rider, was recommended, um, and has he submitted applications, ready? Okay. Is there a motion to approve Mr. Mr. Vivas?
So moved.
And a second?
Aye.
Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Stripling?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Lutzen?
Yes.
Um, is there any questions from the press tonight? Okay. With no questions, we do have a need to go into closed session for, um, personnel, General Statute 143318-11, and legal, uh, client, uh, attorney-client confidentiality, Is there a motion to, uh, enter in the closed session? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None?
Coming out of closed session, there was no action taken. Is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
And second?
Second.
All in favor is that?
Aye.
You want to vote? We are adjourned. Thank you.